The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call a board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask Dr. Wagner to read the mission statement.
Thank you. Our mission statement is that we educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. Next is our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. I have one person who would like to speak before the board. I'll call up Judy Crane.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Judy Crane, and I would like to address two issues this evening. First, I want to express my strong support for approval of the referendum questions on the April 4th ballot. I believe that there has been careful, comprehensive process in determining the needs of our students in the school district, both now and in the future. It is extremely important that we take action on the most pressing issues at this time, as well as planning for the future in an effective and responsible manner. This community takes pride in our public schools, and we must make certain that this will continue to be true. My other reason for speaking this evening is recognizing that this is the last regular school board meeting at which member Mike Bleka will be at the table. As an old-timer, I have observed Mike's role in the education in our community for a very long time. I don't know just when he began reporting for the newspaper on school board meetings, but I was there when he covered the campaign of the first elected Green Bay school board, which was seated in the spring of 1974. And for quite a while after, Mike reported on the meetings of the board in that role. And he was always present, always fair, always careful, always comprehensive in his coverage of the important issues. Later, Mike became an editor at the Press Gazette, and there he also played an important role in coverage of public education, as well as other important community issues. All this prepared him well to be a fine member of the Green Bay school board, where he has served since 2005. You all know his contributions to the students and families of this district. I want to especially mention Mike's role in representing the Green Bay school board and district at the state level on legislative issues. I do not believe that there had ever before been a Green Bay school board member who served as the president of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. I think we have learned that these connections are very important in today's environment. So, thank you, Mike, for all the years you've spent in this room in different roles, in the Green Bay schools as a volunteer, as well as a board member, and for your service on behalf of the children of Green Bay. I know that you will continue to support our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to our rule call. Sandy?
Becker?
Here.
Bleka?
There.
Dorf?
There.
Janch?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Sinclair?
Here.
Grossart?
Here.
We have all seven board members present this evening. To my left at the tables, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, also Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And we have two intercity student council members present today. Grace Sinclair, who's president of intercity student council from Preville, and John Grossart, also from Preville, who gave a very nice presentation today about the DECA program at Preville when Tony Evers was here for Career and Technical Education Day. Or he's celebrating the week, actually. So, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Next, I would like entertain a motion to approve the following minutes: regular board meeting, February 20th, 2017; special board meeting, March 6th, 2017; special board meeting, closed session, February 20th, 2017, and March 6th, 2017.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes have been approved. There are no communications to be placed on file tonight. And next is our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Julie Janch.
Yes, I believe, John, I guess it will be, as I'm seeing the update on the monitoring reports. We got together, Mike and I, and John, and I believe it will be an overview of what's going to be presented in the upcoming months and how we came to that point.
Sure. Thanks for having me. So, we have our monitoring reports that we've put together as far as the timeline and process. And we've come to the board before, earlier this year in September, and at other times, and had communication about what the monitoring reports look like. We've been in a state of transition where we were transitioning from the way that monitoring reports were done several years ago to being more informational pieces that we've had for the past few months. But now we're phasing back into a system of more careful monitoring of measures that are leading indicators of success within a variety of different departments. And we've put together a timeline with a variety of different points at which we can check and look to see how are we doing as a system. So, really, these are meant to be high-level systems' overviews to give us a good idea of if we're performing in those particular areas. And the different dates that we have within the timeline basically outline what it would look like. So, we were focusing first on multi-level systems of support, which is really a good framework and foundation for the way that we operate as a system. And we decided that it would be good for us to begin that process in April, because then when we have, you know, everybody new and current on the board, it lays a really good foundation for the rest of the work that we'll be doing. It's a really good lens for what we'll be doing. Then, May would be part two of that, because it's really a deep, comprehensive view of multi-level systems of support. And following with that, we would have information in the following months on math, literacy, gifted and talented. Then, we would be going into our school success plans. And so, we would do some work with our elementary school success plans, starting with title schools and then non-title, and then going on with secondary before that. So, we would be following the process of looking at the different departments, the different schools, and the different programs, and having clear measures of what it was that we're hoping to see, both in the long term, but what were some of the leading indicators that we were going to measure on a regular basis. So, that way, things won't be a hunch as to whether or not things are performing. It'll be a clear timeline and cycle of inquiry where we can look at the data points and really have a clear idea of how we're performing as a system. We'll be using that internally as well, of course, to look at our own programming and look at what we can do to improve as a system and what we can do within these different programs that we offer. So, this just provides a snapshot of how we hope to report.
Yes, Mike?
John, would you explain a little bit more how we had talked about breaking apart the April and May presentations on multi-level systems of support? What you would focus on in each of those presentations?
So, in the April meeting, it would be, there would be a larger, more general overview of what we're doing under multi-level systems of support as a district. The look that we would be looking at in May would be more of a focus on what the reporting would look like through WISE-LOCOM and others. And so, it would be more of a technological perspective of how are we doing, both universally, and then how are we doing with our tiered interventions with students? So, it would really be taking a deeper look at our performance in those areas. There's been a lot of work done here in Green Bay by our teams, and I think that things are really coming together and bearing a lot of fruit as far as how we're serving the universal, but how we're also intervening when students begin to struggle. So, I think the information that we'll be able to share as far as the overview and then the deeper dive related to data will be worthwhile. I think that, too, along with that, if we're looking at potential retreat days in the summer, that would be a good time for us to be able to really take a deep dive, because I think during the monitoring reports, there'll be enough time to go into some degree of depth. But really, some of these issues are really so multifaceted that to go into deep context and deep data dive, we would think that a work session in retreat would probably be effective as well in addition to these regular reports.
John, I'm looking at the calendar, and it looks very comprehensive. Looking at December, departmental success plans. My way of thinking, department success doesn't stand on its own, but rather as a characteristic of how they've supported the schools, correct?
I agree completely. In fact, most of our departmental success plans are based on helping the schools meet the goals of their school success plans.
So, I would think that there'd be some things that would be in common for all the schools in terms of, you know, department aid.
Yes.
These are the things we're going to do that are going to impact all the schools. That said, I'm wondering if it wouldn't make more sense to have the departmental success plans precede the school success plans? Where you say, here's the framework that the departments have set up to help the schools succeed as you hear about their plans. Have you given that any thought?
It's something I was thinking about to some degree, too. It's something we can take in under consideration and see what we can do.
To that point, I wonder if, you know, if you decide you want to do that, sticking it after the September presentation? Because the September presentation is the overview.
Sure.
Although, I guess it's also secondary schools. But anyway, never mind.
We may need to spread it into another month and move the timeline. Again, and I also addressed in the memo that this is, even though we're trying to formalize this as much as possible, we also want to make sure that it's flexible enough so that it meets the needs of the board and meets the needs of the schools, so that we really are looking at this as our lens for looking at success and lens of moving forward. But we also know it's going to be something that's going to likely change over time. And we might see that, like you said, we might see that through our department's success work that we want to make sure that that is reported before school success plans. Or we may have another timely topic that's incredibly prudent that we move forward sooner rather than later in this timeline. So, this is really meant as our best plan at this point, but knowing that organizations need to be incredibly flexible to meet the needs of the students, there may be some changes that we would want to take into advisement.
Can you, we've had multiple iterations of school reports over the years. Can you, and what I heard you describe sounded like it's going to be different than what we've had in the past. But can you explain it a little more detail? Of course, you don't know what we've done.
Sure.
Do you know what we've done in the past?
I know to a degree what's been done in the past.
Okay. But to help me understand how these, in more detail, how these are going to be different than what we've done in the past.
Sure. I think what I've seen when this is done well in other systems is that there's a very tight cascading from the district priorities to the strategic actions that we're going to put into place to make sure that those priorities are met. And then, what are the specific measures that we're going to look at to know that we're making progress? It's one thing to go on a feeling or a hunch or have some data that shows improvement in one category and another, or maybe the system isn't doing as well in one area. But it's really thinking about what is the most critical thing that we need to do as a district? And how can we measure it, not only down the road with a state assessment or a STAR assessment or something like that, but what are some measures that we can look at that are going to show that it's beginning to take root earlier on? So, I really look at that as being one of the bigger differences, is that there would be that cascading. And as Ed alluded to as well, there should be a cascading of support. So, if the district has strategic objectives and departments are linked to those objectives in supporting the schools, that there's a clear lineup of those supports. Just as an example, if the elementary schools are working on AVMR math practices, and that's one of their key points in raising achievement around academic excellence within a lot of the elementary schools, then our departments need to have some things within their plans that strategically support those efforts and measure those efforts on a regular basis. So, it's that tight cascading of the measures and the goals.
So, it'll be more of a district-level presentation about the schools? Or will each school be coming before us to present like we have done some of the times?
It would be more of a district-level presentation, but we would also make sure that we had clear school examples. And then, when we're looking at the school success plans, that would be more of a focus of the trends and patterns that we see within the school plans. And the results would be shared in a uniform format at the end of the year. So, it would be a little bit of both, but really trying to think of things as systemically as possible, but also pinning it down with a degree of accountability, self-accountability as far as what is it that we really want to do and how are we going to do it well? I also think keeping the plan and our objectives as thin as possible is probably more effective than a thick plan. When I've worked on school improvement before, some years, I would, as a principal, I would have a 20-page plan. And in the future, later on, I would end up with a three- or four-page plan. And we actually got a lot more done and changed more as a school when we had a tighter plan, as opposed to trying to list everything under the kitchen sink. So, that's part of this as well, is making sure that we're not trying to do 100 things at the same time, that we're really focusing on doing a tighter number of things well. And I would say the primary piece that we want to focus on as far as our objective for our work is really the multi-level systems of support, because that focuses not only on the universal instruction for all kids being as good as it can be, but also the tiered interventions that we have for our students that struggle.
Thank you.
If I could just add, I think what our intentionality is to really make sure that the board has a clear understanding of where we're making progress and the kind of interventions being done to address any needs or concerns. So, really having that real clear understanding of the work and the lifting that's going on in our schools by staff is really important. So, and really having consistency in what's being monitored so that you can clearly see that nexus between the district goals, and John, you talked about that nicely, and the work being done, and the results. And then, if we're not getting the results, what we're doing to address that as well.
Right. I think, too, when we're looking as closely and tightly at these data points, we want to do so from a mind frame of a growth mindset, so that if one of our particular measures shows a drop rather than a gain, we can really address that from a perspective of how can we change it? We, of course, want to hold ourselves highly accountable. But if there is a struggle, we want to learn from that struggle as much as possible and implement a change as immediately as possible so that we don't continue down the wrong road. So, I think that link will be really important.
I want to thank you, John, for helping you. Both you requested your question. And you and Kim met with Mike and I with regard to this. And I know that there was input from the board as to what everybody wanted to see come forward. And I think that this is a great start. And we had talked about it being fluid, that if we started on this and they need more data, people that the board feels they need more data, that can be worked into that.
Sure. Very open to that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess I would just add to that, Julie. I've been involved in this committee, I guess, if you want to call it that, for a number of years now, since we've changed things. And I think every year that we've done it, the reports have improved. And I think it reflects the board's need for more in-depth programs and processes and supported by data. I mean, I think that's one thing that we've always been firm on, is that show us if it works. And if it doesn't work, maybe we need to do something else. So, thanks, John, and Kim, and all of those involved in putting this together, because I think we've really improved, staff has improved the presentations. And I think it really reflects what the board is looking for.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate the guidance, and it's all from a supportive perspective. You know, we're here to support the schools, and the schools are there, the principals are there to support the teachers, and we're glad to do so. So, thank you. Thank you.
Is that it, Drew?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I figured it was. I just wanted to ask. Next, we'll go to our superintendent's update.
Thank you. I'm not sure what this will do. Good evening. I have, I'm going to start with the calendar and some very important meetings coming up, beginning tomorrow. March 14th, we have a community information session on the referendum. It is at Jackson Elementary at 6:30 PM. Then, on March 16th, which is Thursday, a community information session on the east side at 6:30, again, at Martin Elementary. So, those are also listed on our website. In addition to that, on March 20th, we'll be hosting an open house at Barrett Elementary School, inviting the community to come in between the hours of 11:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And you can tour the building as well. On March 20th through the 24th, it is spring recess. On April 3rd, we begin again teaching and learning work session meeting here in the boardroom at 5:30, followed by the organizational support work session immediately. April 4th is election day. April 14th, recess day. All school district buildings will be closed. April 17th is a regular board meeting at 5:30. And then, April 19th is the Golden Apple Awards banquet at the Radisson and Conference Center. So, that's the calendar. And I have just a couple of success pieces I'd like to share, if I could. First of all, there's a gentleman in the audience, one of our very own teachers, who didn't know I was going to do this, but I've seen it tweeted out. Mr. Brent Bergstrom is here tonight, and he was Teacher of the Month. Represented, he teaches at Chapel. And it was 101 WIXX identified him as Teacher of the Month. So, congratulations, Brent. We also have three Golden Apple winners this year. Michelle Flecheck from King Elementary, Steven Ingles from Southwest High School, and Sarah Yantz from Wilder Elementary. And this is a very important award. I think what people may not recognize is there are more than 5,000 teachers that could have been considered for this important award. There were seven apples, golden apples, given out, and Green Bay area public school staff earned three of them. And we had, I believe, 19 teachers of distinction this year as well. It's, I think Lori Blakesley shared with me that the Green Bay area public school staff has been awarded more than 90 to date and moving closer to 100. So, we have extraordinary teachers, and I can't thank them enough for the hard work that they do. Each is deserving of a golden apple, but these were the individuals identified. So, congratulations to all of them, and we'll be there to celebrate with them in April as well. And that is my success story for tonight.
We do have one action item. And if someone could read that motion, that would be great.
I move that board member Brenda Warren be submitted to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards as the Green Bay area public school district's nominee for the interim appointment to the WASB Board of Directors from Region 3.
Second.
As you know, Mike is stepping down from the school board. Judy gave a very nice tribute to him. His last meeting will be in April, April 3rd. And as part of that, he's been on the WASB Board of Directors, was president, as Judy mentioned, a couple of years ago. And he has to step down from that position as he steps down from this board position. I've decided I'd like to submit my name for consideration just to serve out the rest of his term. And then, we'll decide at that point if I want to run for election for the official Board of Director position. So, this requires a motion and nomination officially from the board for me to be able to submit my application.
Would you like me to explain how this will work?
Go ahead.
The, when there is an interim appointment, and actually, there is an interim appointment in the region just south of us. Steve Klessig is leaving his board, and he's on the Brilliant School Board. He represents his region. He is not running again. He has been on the Brilliant School Board for 30 years. The nomination deadline for, and this, a letter went to superintendents and board presidents in every school district in Region 3. So, any board is free to submit a nominee. The deadline is April 5th. And then, the week following that, there will be a conference call of all current WASB directors. And all directors will be emailed copies of the, Brenda has to submit a resume and a letter of application just stating her qualifications and why she wants to serve. And then, there will be a vote by the board. And whoever is selected will serve in that capacity until the fall regional meeting, which is usually late September, October. And then, anyone in the region is free to run at that time, including Brenda. And then, who's ever elected at that time will start serving immediately and then be formally seated at the state convention in January. And then, that person who's elected at the fall regional meeting will serve a three-year term.
Any other comments or questions? Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Bleka?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I was about to make a comment, but you called the vote a "O" too quickly. I'm just going to say thank you for agreeing to do this. It's important that we have representation on that.
All right. Next, we have a legal department update. Melissa will come to the table for that.
She brought her team.
Your whole team is here. The pupil services department brought their, or student services brought their team last week, so I thought we'd bring our team this evening. So, I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight and give you an update on the work of the legal department. For our viewing audience, I'm Melissa Thiel-Koller. I'm the district's legal counsel. And to my right is Ellen Krieger, who is the district's paralegal.
We make up the district's legal department. We're going to start off tonight with some background information, and then, we're going to talk a little bit about the work that we have been doing since we've become a team, a full-time team in January of 2016, when Ellen joined me full-time. Lori, this is not working.
Oh, there we go. Has to talk to the computer.
This is the legal department, not the technology department. Are we set? Okay, here we go. All right. Just wanted to start out tonight with, I'm not going to read you our district's, our department's mission, but just highlighting our department's mission and the history of our legal department. We had, of course, Act 10, which eliminated collective bargaining and districts across the state of Wisconsin have moved towards in-house legal counsel in some smaller districts. It's a combination of HR and legal counsel because no longer is that collective bargaining agreement really the script of how to manage employee relations and now the laws and various different legislative changes affect those labor and employment relations. So, that was really a move statewide to add that position. Here in Green Bay, we were one of the first. In addition to that, public entities have seen an influx of open records requests. As you know, the amount in, we'll talk about the volume later on in the presentation. We've also seen complex contracts come our way that need attention and reviewing. The focus on student data privacy has become a real issue for districts across the country with the real increase in use of online tools and various different third parties that would like access to student information. And then our family situations here in the school district have become quite complex and have, are a lot different than what they used to be some 20 years ago here in the district. So, as I said, in January of 2016, because of the volume of work that we've had here in the department, Ellen came on full-time. She was part-time between me and special education and Claudia graciously agreed to let me bring her over full-time to the legal department. And in addition to that, we really focus on providing our legal representation that is consistent with the board's mission and vision, but not only consistent with the board's mission and vision, but making sure that it's pragmatic and that it can meet the everyday needs of our departments and our schools and our teachers who are teaching our kids every day in the classroom. There's always a legal answer, but we always want to make sure that we're providing that legal answer in the most effective way to meet all of the needs of our, all of our stakeholders in the community and our families. So, this is just, oh, I'm sorry. This is just a brief overview of probably the most consistent work that we have in the district. Again, I'm not, I'm not going to read this to you, but every day, I, we don't know what we're walking into. It's, it's a fun to come to work because we never know what the day is going to be. Sometimes Mondays and Fridays are more fun than the other days. Those seem to be the days with the most surprises. And again, this, all of our work is focused on providing that consistent with the district's mission and vision as well as the district's strategic framework. So, we're just going to highlight a few of these pieces of work that come probably to the forefront more than others. And we're going to talk about, we're going to describe our work and then describe the indicators of success. So, I refer to this as officer of the day and this work is consistent with our thriving workforce and engagement strategic priority. Our job is to make sure that we're supporting our workforce so that they are able to deliver a rigorous curriculum to our students and that they don't have to deal with the noise of the legal requirements and the, I guess, pressures and distractions that may come their way. In addition to that, we really try and be available and accessible by our families and our staff so that we can have that engagement with our families and our staff and building those meaningful connections. We want to make sure that we're responsive to our staff and to our families. So, when we talk about our indicators of success, our goal between Ellen and I is to get back to somebody with a phone call or an email within 24 hours of first being contacted. And if we can't give an answer, we at least acknowledge that phone call and acknowledge that email so that people know that we're working on their concern. Oftentimes, the issues that we are contacted with are time-sensitive and it's very important that we get back to individuals in a timely manner. We want to make sure that we're providing ongoing legal updates to staff and the board and the district level superintendent and the district level administrators to make sure that everybody's work is relevant and is legally compliant. So, in addition to acting as officer of the day and answering ongoing and daily phone calls, we, as you know, bring forward many policies to the board. And when I came to the district in 2013, January of 2013, that was one of the number one things that I was asked to do was to continue to update our policies, continue to revamp our policies and convert the policies from those letter series policies to the number series policies. So, we have been aligning our policies to support, again, the district's mission and vision and to make sure that our policies support our rigorous academic framework that our teachers are delivering in the classroom. The three sources from the policies, as you know, we've come before you before to talk about the continuing monitoring of those policies and those policies that we're still converting are those 600, 700, and 900 series. We continue to have the periodic review of policies. And then those policies that come to you because of the federal or the state law requirements when those changes have been made.
Melissa, can I just interrupt you for a second there?
Yep.
Have you had a chance to look at the proposed state law and any idea how many policy changes will be required because of what's proposed in there?
We have looked at that preliminarily because the language still is not out from the governor's office. For sure, the governor has proposed to eliminate course options and go back to part-time open enrollment. So, that will require probably at least two or three policy changes on that level. Last year, I believe we had about seven or eight policies that we had to bring forward that, or the last time the budget passed, about seven or eight policies that had to be brought forward for either revisions or creations.
And depending on what joint finance committee does, could be more?
Correct. Correct. Yep. So, the indicators of success, we've given you some numbers here. How many policies, since I've come on board, that have either been reviewed or revised by the board or policies that have been created? We're scheduled between now and the end of this fiscal year to bring 22 more policies for your review or for adoption. And then the 600 and 700 and 900 series, we continue to work on that in hopes of bringing those forward to you as well for those adoptions. But even more than the statistics, every day we are constantly referring to those policies to guide our work as a school district. And we refer our families, we refer our staff, we refer even students who have questions when working with high school students as to questions about the district and about the requirements here in the district. And really, these policies, I like to think of the policies as telling the district's story. So, it's important to always, while we subscribe to WASB's model policies, it's important that we tailor those policies to meet the needs of the district and to support the district's mission and vision. And then I've been before you before on talking about our work with family law. If you would have asked me four years ago when I came to the district, what would be the majority of my work and if I, I would have never said family law. But between Ellen and I, this, this area pretty well consumes a good part of our day in answering staff members' questions about various different family scenarios our students are living in and interpreting various family law documents, a number of different documents. When we think that we've seen every family law document that there may come from a court or between parties, a new one comes our way that we haven't interpreted or reviewed. And in really working proactively with our guardian at Lytoms and our family law attorneys, I had an opportunity to go speak to the Brown County Family Law Bar and talk to them about what our position is here in the district in working with family law attorneys and inviting guardian at Lytoms in and allowing them to come talk to our kids. And that was really a good opportunity to let them know that our job is to remain neutral and to be positive with both parents and that we do not take positions in family law matters unless there is a health and safety exception. So, when we look at our indicators of success, that neutrality statement really became active in our Board of Education Policy 491. I would say of any of the policies that we rely on the most, it's really that policy that we refer to families and staff members because it's staff members who are working with our kids every day who may, may have a position on what parent may be the most beneficial for that student, but we need to remember that at the end of the day, our job is to provide an education to our kids and we need to maintain that positive relationship with both parents so that we're providing the most solid education we can for, for the student. We also rolled out the revised residency and guardianship and authorization forms. I was before the board last school year to talk about the work of that committee and that those forms have really clarified roles and responsibilities for non-parents and guardians in the lives of our students. We've created flags in Infinite Campus so that our teachers and staff members are able to see that those relationships exist and that we do have authorizations on file. Ellen has done a phenomenal job creating workflows for our clericals and our, partnering with our Department of Technology, we have a system in Infinite Campus where those flags and forms are entered into very seamlessly by the clericals so that we have consistency then on the Infinite Campus side of how those look and how those relationships look on the end for our teachers and any other individuals who may be accessing Infinite Campus. We've had very positive feedback from the clericals who have been entering this information because before we've had these forms in the system, they were creating legal flags. And so, this information differed between building to building as to how that looked for, for teachers and how that relationship was then presented to teachers when they wanted to know if the stepdad had authorization to come to conferences and that sort of information. In addition, I just included the statistic on how many of those educational right flags have been created since the start of the school year. And I think what's really valuable then, again, is that transparency for our staff and that those, that information now exists in Infinite Campus. And then again, those 122 phone calls, those are all individual families. So, there may be five phone calls behind one family, but those are 122 different situations that we've been tracking since November because we have a lot of the same families that call back and that there may be disputes between the parents. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were keeping track of that and that the principals were also aware as well as the executive directors here and any of the social workers that are working with those families.
Those families know how to call, why to call you or are they routed through a principal? Would give them your name or?
They come both ways. Sometimes they'll call here to the district office wanting to talk to somebody about their particular issue and Chris Galvin in our central office does a great job routing those up to Ellen. Or we could get them coming from the principal, that the principal, the principals really do a nice job trying to facilitate this, but when family members don't like the answer from the principals, then the principals know that they can refer the families to us.
The educational rights, rights flags, would you just give a couple of examples?
Sure.
Educational rights that schools have to be part of this.
Sure. So, I'll give an example of stepparents. Unfortunately, while the federal law recognizes stepparents as parents under FERPA, the Wisconsin law does not. So, we need authorizations on file for stepparents to access student records, come to conferences, those sorts of things. A very awkward conversation when that person is typically acting as a parent. Prior to the revisions to the forms, that form, that authorization had to be signed every year. Last year, we revised our forms so that that authorization can be given and the rights, it's called rights to records, rights to educational decisions. Once that authorization is given, it's entered into Infinite Campus and until it's revoked, it is going to remain in force. Another example is our students that live with somebody here in the district who is not a parent or a guardian and they're here for reasons other than just attending school. So, if a, a parent is incarcerated and the parent sends the student to live with somebody here in the Green Bay school district, but there's no, oftentimes, we don't have formal guardianship papers from a court in those circumstances. We've created the educational guardianship and acceptance of educational guardianship so the parent would fill that out and then the individual assuming the responsibility would, would fill that out and then that individual assuming the responsibility takes on the role of a parent and then is responsible for behavior and attendance and truancy and those sorts of things. Prior to these forms this year, we had the affidavit of residency. In those forms, it was not clear who took on that role for truancy and behavior and when we needed fees, student fees. In addition to that, a person who had agreed to the affidavit of residency, if they became frustrated with a student or things weren't working out for them, they may say, I, I no longer am responsible for the student and then we were left with no individual to contact. I'll allow that person, that student to still live with me, but I'm not going to be on the person responsible if, you know, they're having an issue at school or I need to come for a meeting. I don't want to be that person any longer. And so, our, our social workers and school counselors were really stuck in a position of not having someone to contact and be responsible for that student. So, now, once someone accepts this responsibility, only the parent can revoke it. And, and the forms are very clear and our central registration staff and our clerical staff go over these forms with these individuals to make sure that they understand the scope of the responsibility that they're assuming.
Sherry, did you say that federal law is more permissive than state law in this case?
With respect to stepparents and whatever law provides the higher level of confidentiality and privacy trumps. So, because the Wisconsin law is stricter on who can be parents, the Wisconsin law trumps and that's why we need the authorizations for stepparents.
Who determines that?
Who determines what?
Which, which one provides a higher level of confident, which one is stricter? I always thought that, and I thought it was, was your position that federal law trumps state law and that that's the way we were addressing things where, when state law said we could do certain things, the federal law said, no, you can't. You have to go back to federal law because that trumps state law.
It depends on how the law is written. So, for example, the wage and hour law, the federal wage and hour law is the floor and states can have stricter, stricter requirements for the wage and hour law. For FERPA, the FERPA law is the floor. States can have more restrictive laws for, can have more restrictive laws for confidentiality and privacy. It just depends on how the federal law is written as to whether it's the floor or the ceiling in a particular circumstance. Okay. And, go ahead, Adrian.
So, if you had theoretically, if you had a federal law that was stricter for stepparents not being able to, or being able to, the state was more strict with stepparents, but the federal was more strict with, for example, unrelated legal guardians, then it would be the stricter of both? It could be?
Correct. Right, because those would address two different issues. Correct. Another example, last year, the state legislature proposed, under the federal law, we can deem a third party a school official and then be able to, there's a number of requirements that come with that, but then we can exchange pupil record information. So, for example, our bus carriers are school officials so that we can talk about student behavior and work proactively with our bus carriers. Last year, the Wisconsin, or maybe two years ago, the Wisconsin legislature introduced a bill that would prohibit school districts from naming any third-party school officials. That would have been more strict than what the federal law would have allowed and Wisconsin's school districts wouldn't have been allowed to name third parties as school officials and then share pupil record information between contractors and the school district.
Then, if you would, then explain within Act 309 where, in, in Act 309, I believe, it says that we can share information with police and that back and forth, but yet you are requiring a subpoena every time we want information?
Correct.
Based on FERPA, you said?
FERPA requires a subpoena or a warrant.
So, in that case, you're saying federal law takes precedence?
Correct. In that case, it would.
But in the other case, it's state law takes precedence?
Because it's more strict on who's deemed, who qualifies as a parent. Correct.
So, it's always the stricter of the two?
Correct. And the, and the confusing part is some areas of the law are strict and some are not. There was also, WASB has pushed that the Wisconsin law just be mirrored FERPA so that we don't have these confusions and that has not gone very far with the legislature because of the many nuances between FERPA and the Wisconsin law. That has been on the WASB agenda for a while.
Do other states have their state law and federal law matched?
Some states do, but many do not. I belong to the Council of School Attorneys, which is a division of the National School Board Association and we have a listserv and there's daily questions about the nuances in various different states between their state pupil records law and the federal FERPA We could have an entire night on this.
Just Melissa, if I could?
Yes.
So, so the flags that are created, who can see those flags?
Good question. Some of the flags, most of the flags can be seen by the, by the teachers, the clerical staff and the building principals and the pupil services staff. Some of the flags.
Just Melissa, if you could.
Yes.
So, so the flags that are created, who can see those flags?
Good question. Some of the flags, most of the flags can be seen by the, by the teachers, the clerical staff, and the building principals, and the people services staff. Some of the flags that require a higher level of confidentiality, so if there's an authorization to exchange information on file, you can see that flag, but you're not going to see who the authorization to exchange information is with unless you do a little bit further digging and you have those rights. Because we get a number of authorizations to exchange information with mental health providers or physicians. And we want to make sure that we are only allowing individuals who have the rights to that information to see that information. But the flags that I talked to, that Dr. Wigner had asked, those, the teachers, the clerical staff, people services staff, principals can see those flags. And again, we work very closely with the Department of Technology to make sure that the proper rights are afforded to who can see that level of information.
And the 5,000 is just the school?
It's just the school year because that, we just rolled that out this year. Yep, yep. Okay, and as I spoke before, a large part of our work is working on contracts and data sharing agreements with third parties. We've aligned this work really to the strategic direction of personalized pathways. Those partners that have, you heard a lot last week from the student services staff about those third parties who have come in and partnered with us to provide awesome opportunities for our students. And our work is really to provide transparency and to make sure that roles and responsibilities are clearly defined. And then with those third-party partners that want to share information, so for example, as the student services staff talked about NWTC coming in and working with the Monocahill School, we have an agreement in place so that we're able to share information between the parties to facilitate pupil records information sharing between the parties and getting the proper authorizations in place. So I outlined the types of contracts that you may see that we work on and then the indicators of success. Again, more statistics for you, but again, I think the, the real key to this work is not only just minimizing our liability, but making sure that we have those, that transparent roles and responsibilities with our community partners. And, and again, as we've been to the table before, talking about those online resources and making sure that our students' information is protected and that we have the right procedures in place that should we no longer use our online resources, we get the information backwards, destroyed from that online resource, who has been given the information and provided that tool for our kids. So this is just some more information about those data sharing agreements and what the law requires before we can share information with third parties and those online resources. We've created workflows and agreements for various types of online resources. We've worked with teaching and learning, as well as the Department of Technology, in how to vet those online resources and then approve them and, and enter into model online agreements. Another hot topic on my list survey is working through those online resources and how you, districts are managing those and making sure that staff are not using resources that have not been vetted and that have not been deemed school officials in order to share that information. Working with Kim Shanock, we have 50 community partnership agreements in place, which I think is pretty phenomenal. That means we have 50 community partners that we are working with, who are working with our students and we're partnering with. We're sharing some level of information with those individuals. Again, Department of Technology has made this really seamless. We have a number of partners that ask for and require information to be pulled out of Infinite Campus, and they've written reports, and it's been a pretty nice transition in getting that information. So we've come a long way in working on this. There were a few bumps along the way, but I think we've done a pretty good job in being able to partner with those groups to provide great opportunities for our kids. And then finally, the last area I wanted to highlight is records requests. And, and really, I think our job here is to make sure not only that we are answering records requests, which may be open records requests, or directory data requests, or student records requests that we receive from guardian at items or doctors and those sorts of individuals, but also making sure that we're being proactive with our staff and that they are using best practices when communicating via email, when communicating via parents, because we never know what kind of request will come our way and we want to make sure that all of our communication is in the best light should we get those, those requests. So we've established a legally compliant process in answering those requests. There is a number of steps that are required for the open records law. We have to acknowledge the request. We have to locate the request. We can only assess reproduction costs with those requests and the locating costs. And then we need to respond to those requests. So if there's any information that we aren't disclosing, we have to give specific reasons as to why we're not disclosing. We have to do this within the legally required timeline and then include the language that should there be a, should the requestor want to challenge the response to the request, that they have the opportunity to do so by petitioning the court or the attorney general. I'm happy to say that in the last four years, we've had no legal challenges to our responses to our open records requests and that we've answered all of our student records requests really timely. Because again, those are time-sensitive requests we receive from parents or guardian at items who are needing to go to court with that information. And I just wanted to highlight this statistic for you. Before I came, Sandy was recording and tracking our open records requests back to, we could go back to 2008, 2009. So back in that school year, we had five open records requests. And as you can see, since that year, they've been going up in number to date. We have the date as of 2/28, but actually, one came in last week. So we're up to 24 open records requests for this school year. And that is probably going to outpace 2015, 2016, which was the highest number of open records requests that we've had since tracking them from 2008, 2009.
Should be kind enough to give a couple of examples for the public.
Sure.
On what you mean by record request.
Sure.
These are in all parents asking that their records be moved to another school when they, when they move out of the community or somewhere else, are they? So if you could explain that a bit?
Yep, so open records requests can come from any, any individual. It does not have to be an individual from the community. It can be any, anyone living anywhere.
By living anywhere, you mean within the United States, within the world?
Within the world, really.
Thank you.
We, we get a number of out-of-state requests. We get requests for purchasing information, bid information after bids have been completed. People who've bid on our RFPs who were not successful, they want to learn more as to why they were not successful, so they'll ask for that information. We have open records requests for emails. We have open records requests for payroll information, open records requests for our budget information, our checkbook information, our P-card statements. Am I forgetting anything?
That covers most of them, I would say.
They run the gamut. And so what that requires us is determine if we have the records, if there are records that exist. We don't have to create records in response to a request. It's not like the Freedom of Information Act where you're requesting information rather than records. The Freedom of Information Act does not apply to public school districts.
Would you, if, if you don't know offhand, that's fine, you can respond later. Of those requests, do you have a breakout of how many are from our community, how many are from our state, how many are from other states, and how many are from individuals, how many are from organizations?
We, we could get you that information. I don't, because we track them. We have a database, but we could get you that information.
Any idea what the causes, what the reasons for the dramatic increase in requests?
I would be.
I know that's asking you to speculate.
Yeah, I would have to speculate. I, I will say this, since Act 10, there has been a greater scrutiny of public sector employers and the political landscape has changed. Oftentimes, these open records requests are politically charged requests from various different groups that are trying to support their positions with numbers and information from school districts or various different public employers.
I would offer too, we've seen an increase of vendors wanting to know, for example, what technology, we'll get a technology request if we purchase computers, what did that, you know? Since we've been engaged in construction after the last referendum, they'll want to know who we bid out with and, you know, I think that last packet was really large in terms of contracting, contractor information. So just, it, it almost seems to be, there's a marketing component to open records right now, from what I see. Most recently, I think we've got quite a few.
Yes.
Just seeing who the district went with, trying to understand why, and looking at other people's bids or whatever, you know, that they've submitted. So there's a fair amount of that, and I would assume when you're in construction and moving forward, people want to know what you're thinking in technology as well.
Yep, the last really large request was from a bidder who was not successful in the energy efficiency bids, the RFP, and they wanted to see all of the RFPs for, for that bid. Okay, so I, I just want to say thank you for letting us bring forward our work and to talk to you about what we do on a daily basis, supporting all of our staff throughout the district and our students. And I, I could never be a teacher. This is my way of giving back to our, our community and to having, I hope, a positive impact on public education in, in Wisconsin. And I want to thank Dr. Langenfeld for being innovative enough back in January of 2013 for creating this position and, and bringing this into the district. If there's any other questions.
Jan?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
You know, having been on the board before and after you came to the district, it's been so helpful to have you right here and answering questions. I know I call you on a fairly regular basis. And, and I know other people do too, and I think that's the, your responsiveness is greatly appreciated in, in that area.
Thank you.
I think it's, if I could offer too, I know that as a former building principal back in the day, to have, had to have waited for a response when you have an urgent situation sitting before you that needs a legal decision is a really tough place for principals to be in and for school leaders and, and students as well. And, and I think that we've averted a lot of things that could have gone in, in places that wouldn't have been successful for that child. So I think it's been very, very helpful. I see that as, that, that first call, and I think our principals would be supportive of that as well, of their support, of their children.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have our InterCity Student Council report. Turn that over to Grace.
Okay, so as always, we have some really great things going on in our schools and around the district. So we'll just get started out with Southwest. So track has started, and that comes with the end of the men and women's basketball season, and they ended very strong. We recently had DECA State, that was last week, and they have five students going on to internationals, and that will be down in Anaheim, California, and that will be April 26th through the 30th. FCCLA State is the first week in April, and then HOSA State is the second weekend in April, so those are both coming up. And also, a big congratulations to the Spotlight Singers for winning second runner-up and, not really sure how to say her name, but Evan, Evan Durasun, she won the best female soloist in their division this weekend in Janesville, so very big congratulations to them. And the final math team meet is being held tonight.
Um, okay, so at East, the Devil's Den School Store is going extremely well. This is where students can get coffee and snacks during their first through third periods as just kind of an incentive for good behavior and good grades. Also, Rhapsody Review was this past weekend, which featured middle school, elementary school, as well as the high school show choirs. It was a great performance. Their academic decathlon team went to state and performed very well. And like Grace mentioned, boys and girls basketball just wrapped up for East, and so that's now the start of the spring sports. And finally, Dr. Evers came to Green Bay today. At East, he actually went to see the city stadium and everything going on at East. So that was a great, great experience.
So for Preble, we also attended DECA State, where we actually have 11 students now moving on to internationals. Both John and I will be attending down in April. And we also had a student run for Wisconsin DECA State president, and she actually won. So Katie Murphy is now the president of Wisconsin State DECA, so that's huge. We've never had a student from our school be DECA president, so that's awesome for us. We also have a lot of students going down for HOSA State in the second weekend in April. Our prom is actually really early. It's April 1st, so that's coming up really quickly. We have a lot of planning and stuff to do. Track has their first meet tomorrow and another one on Thursday. Academic decathlon went to state and they did very well. Softball has tryouts tomorrow, and women's soccer has them in two weeks, so all the spring sports are really starting up. And Dr. Evers also came to Preble today to discuss DECA and CET programs.
Yes, okay, so now at West, like Grace said, softball is starting up, soccer is coming up in a couple of weeks, as well as baseball starting back up. So all of these spring teams are really hoping to push to the next level this year. West, their science club is putting on an event called Earth Stock, which is just a celebration of music and earth. Well, they'll, they'll display all of their bands and things like that. They're also putting on a contest to win tickets to a Daya concert, which they will be making posters on the dangers of distracted driving. So many kids can enter in their different posters to be judged.
What concert was it?
Uh, Daya, it's.
She's a popular singer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Oh, of course. Oh, yes, yes, I know her.
And finally, we'd just like to highlight the Ice Bears Girls Hockey Team, which is a district-wide hockey team. They recently just took second in the state.
And, and lastly, we have John Dewey. So something really exciting for them is that they got their student council up and running, which Connor, who is part of InterCity, had a really big role in starting, and he was very excited. And so they recently just started that, and they are starting to do things for the student body and getting things planned. So that's really exciting and something really new for that school. And just the seniors are really working on their capstones and finishing those up and just getting everything ready. So that's it for our report.
Yes, Grace?
Comment, if I may. First of all, congratulations. I had the opportunity to chaffron at a national event with DECA. And, and for those that haven't been there or are aware of DECA, and I know Mr. Dwarf is directly, it is a big deal. And the competition is stiff at state level and a whole lot stiffer at the national level. I would say it's a very well-run competition, some fantastic experiences for our students who get to that level. It's an honor just to be there, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, this is for the board's information. John Dewey's event night is March 30th. If you're interested in going, I think it's 5:30 to 7:30. Is that it? Grace? Okay, great, thank you. Next, we have our Legislative Liaison Report. I'll turn that over to Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Brenda. This'll be a lot quicker than last month. Last month, they gave you kind of a breakdown, and staff helped with the breakdown of some of the major items in the budget. I'll just give you kind of a, an overview on where the budget is now and where it's going. First of all, the budget has, now in the Senate, it's going to be Senate Bill 30. In the Assembly, it'll be Assembly Bill 64. Last week, the WASB sent out, and they've done this every budget year as far as, a 26-page chart, which lit, which lists in different columns, number one, and this is, the chart is all pre-K-12 public education proposals in the governor's budget. The first column is what the governor is proposing as his budget. The second column is what the Department of Public Instruction had requested, and the third column is WASB's position. I sent that, that email with the link to that to Sandy, so any board members that want that chart, just contact Sandy and she will send it to you. And WASB will update this chart as it goes through the process, through joint finance and through the Assembly and through the Senate.
So that's just budget, or that's all of the legislation?
This, the chart is the governor's budget.
Okay.
On pre-K-12 public education. The Joint Finance Committee has developed a tentative schedule from March 27th to the From March 27th to the 30th, Joint Finance has a series of agency briefings where the agencies come in and brief Joint Finance on their budget proposal. There are tentatively six public hearings. The closest one is April 7th in Marinette. And the hearings run from April 3rd to April 21st. And then from May 2nd through early June, the Joint Finance Committee has a whole series of meetings where they review what they've heard at the public hearings and then have their discussion on what they like and don't like and will advance. And then when they're done sometime in the middle of June, they will forward the budget to the Assembly and the Senate. They vote separately. If the Assembly and Senate develop different budgets, then there is a joint conference committee that puts the two budgets together and comes up with the final budget. That goes back to both the Senate and Assembly. At that time, they can just vote it up or down and it can no longer be amended and then it goes to the governor for his signature and that will probably be sometime in July. Any questions on that process? And I would think that, I mean, we'll have some, I think, internal discussions on testifying, probably at Marinette because that's the closest. I think there's, we want in Fond du Lac, but Marinette is really our area. And two other quick things. Last week, we had a meeting with Michelle's Parent Advisory Committee and four legislators joined us, John Mako, Dave Steffen, Dave Hanson and Rob Coles. I think there was an excellent discussion. The parents got to weigh in and ask their own questions. And I think the, I think the parents left better informed on some of the key issues. And I think it was good for the legislators, not just to hear from board members and staff, but directly from our parents. And I, and I think they did and I think they were, I think the legislators also learned a lot.
And if I could add, Mike moderated and did a really nice job of moving things because we had a lot of questions. So really being able to facilitate that, appreciate that. And Katie, you were there.
It kind of worked very well.
Yeah, so thank you for, for that. And I thought parents, parents left, I think, feeling absolutely more informed and appreciative of the legislators' times for someone at their first opportunity. So it was good. So thank you.
Welcome. And then finally, one final, Wednesday is WSB's Day at the Capitol and Brenda and Michelle will be going and I'm sure they will give the board a report next month on, on what they learned on there and the discussion with our legislators. So unless anyone has any questions, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next, we have district events. I prematurely announced one, but are there, is there any other events that anyone would like to put on our calendars? See, go ahead.
If I could, I just to, as I, as I think about, there are so many wonderful things going on and I know our students did an excellent job of highlighting, but I would encourage our, our community and everyone to, to follow along the district on the district Facebook and the district website because there's so much moving all the time. And that's how I learned about our, our Teacher of the Month from Chapel on, on the district website because there's so many excellent things happening. So again, to stay ahead of those community events that affirm the district or even the success, there's just so many great things. So I'd encourage people to, to always kind of monitor that as well. Our social media tells a great story about the work that's going on.
If I could just add, if you haven't been to one of the John Dewey events, the project events, they're really quite informative. In fact, I, if I'm right, the, the young man who we just notified received a scholarship to MSO's nursing school, I remember, I think it was his freshman project, he had designed a hospital.
Yes, you and I.
And we were in quite deep, quite a bit of detail on it. It was nice to see that he was continuing in the medical field.
All right, now we'll move to our system reports. First is teaching and learning, that'll be facilitated by Katie Meloni.
Thank you, Brenda. We had one discussion item, a very inspiring discussion of the alternative education update. Quite informative. And we have four action items. First, I move that the Head Start self-assessment as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney? Aye. Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. I move that the Head Start 2017 continuing app, continuation application summary as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. I move that the independent study policy, PRN 343.3 and independent study procedures and limits rules, 343.3 rule, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Katie. Next, our organizational support and that will be facilitated by Andy Becker.
Okay. For action items, we have first, I move that the change of private school attendance areas for Pilgrim and Trinity Lutheran Schools as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the purchase of property located at 1150 Bellevue Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin for the amount of $650,000 using Head Start grant funds for the purpose of a Head Start Center be approved.
Second.
Chris?
I, I'd like to comment on, on that, if I may. I, I think it, hopefully our public will see that we've worked very closely with the county and the county with us to spend taxpayer money wisely. The county has excess property. It turns out that's property that we can truly use and we're able to get together an agreement to everyone's benefit.
But this is grant money.
Yeah, it's not tech, yeah.
Yeah.
Grant money, still tax.
Still public money.
It's still public money, right?
Further away.
All right, Sandy?
Janch?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
And then on to Human Resources. I move that the 2017-18 dental insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the 2017-18 dental insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Abstain.
Janch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 6-1 abstention.
Move that the Life Insurance Plan Administrator be awarded to MetLife as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the Long-Term Disability Insurance Provider be awarded to the standard and that the cost of living adjustment be eliminated, as presented be approved.
Second.
And just one.
Go ahead.
Because the length of long-term disability can be open-ended, I have some concern that a person needing long-term disability, if, in the unfortunate event that it lasted a, a very long time, this cost of living could, cost of living adjustment could greatly depreciate the value of the benefit, not just slightly depreciate it. However, in this case, I'm still voting yes because the, the overall cost difference is, is overwhelming. But I would, felt that I need to share that. It would, it was the type of change that for me to support it, it would have to be a, an enormous change in our premiums to, to do that. And it would have gone up a huge amount otherwise.
All right, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Janch?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
And I move that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Chris?
It may have a, Mrs. Marsh may have a point of clarification. For teachers that we have now that are on emergency license, I forget if that's the correct term for it, where they don't have a full license yet, they're to be working on their license. I believe as we see here, they have to be let go pending, trying to find somebody who's already fully licensed.
That is correct. And those are the teachers on a permit. So a, a teacher who has a permit is a person who has a bachelor's degree, but does not have any education credits behind them. So they have to apply for a teaching permit and then they have to enroll in a program and show progress. But we cannot, because we have to seek highly qualified teachers, we cannot renew that permit unless we do that. And in order to do that, we have to, we can only apply for those permits again after July 1st.
Does it matter if these particular people have completed their requirement towards certification for the following year?
If they, if they are, if they're, if they have the credential that allows them to get an emergency license or a regular teaching license, then we would not have had to have them resign. The other option would be to have them be non-renewed and, and we don't want to do that. So when we hire these individuals, we inform them that they would have to resign in lieu of being non-renewed because they are still on a permit. Some people did not have to do this because they did get their, you know, their full licensure.
The full licensure, but not, but if they, just to make it clear again, if I'm working towards it and I pick up, I don't know whether it's three or six hours now, towards licensure, if I, even if I've had that completed, I still have to resign?
That is correct. It's the one, because you, if you still don't qualify for the, the full licensure or an emergency licensure.
And is that state regulation or local?
State. It's a state DPI.
Yeah, it, it seems to me, and I'm just being rhetorical now, that if we have somebody that's working hard to get their licensure and we're comfortable with them as a, as a teacher, that we have to go through this process. I think it's terrible for them. I think it's terrible for our district and maybe that's something down the road. If others agree, state law could be modified.
Yes.